Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Chip, do we have anyone from Safe Space?
We have Leah Hayes. She's on the Zoom. Leah, could you unmute?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, Leah.
Hi.
Okay. So, as you know, we've received an application from Safe Space Meeting House. A new application has been submitted for the Community Center Club project on Mill Stream Road with some revised information related to certain site review criteria. As you will recall, the planning board denied the application that was pending last year on this matter. Our decision was in November of last year. And one of the conclusions at that time in the denial had to do with the standard concerning adverse impact of a new use at a non-conforming structure. And so what I would like to do is put a proposal on the table for a slightly different approach to the review of this application. And I believe that Kristin Collins is here. Yes?
We have an easement.
What's that, Leah?
We have an easement that states that the owners are not that they have no problem with noise, that the neighbors have no problem with noise.
Okay.
Or anything like that. They say we have a document that that they've signed that states that they don't have a problem with foot traffic or noise or anything that we have stated we want to do there.
Okay. We'll get to that piece eventually, but yeah, I see you, Bill. What I'd like to do is to put on the table for the planning board's discussion, I guess, some options for how to review this, how to look at this procedurally. Bill, you have a comment?
I'm confused. I thought that we were to issue a certificate of occupancy for that building as being one family home. Am I out of phase somehow?
No. Let's go back a couple of steps and start way at the beginning. The the barn at that property was approved in, I believe, 2015. The application came in in 14. And at that time, the approval made it clear that the only approved use of the property, the structure, was as a single-family residence. So you're correct on that point, Bill. The application that came before us last year was for a community center club, which obviously is different than a single-family residence. But that application was denied, as I mentioned, in November of last year. So at this point in time-
Paula, but that can change.
Leah, could you hold your comments for just a few minutes, please, so we can work through some of these preliminaries? And I will give you an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
So I'd like to lay out the history, so everyone is on the same page with this as we get into the conversation. So the application that was before us last year for the Community Center Club was denied for a number of different reasons. There were a number of conclusions that were made in the decision that indicated that various standards had not been met in our as a result of our review and the determinations that were made. So in looking at this application, we certainly realize that there is some different information that's being presented in the application with respect to a number of the criteria. Jack and Kristin Collins and I had some opportunity to talk a little bit procedurally about different options for moving ahead with this. And what I would like to put on the table for the board's consideration tonight is the fact that one of the negative findings that we made had to do with the fact that this is a proposed new use in a non-conforming structure. One of the standards is that that situation, that new use, could not cause greater adverse impacts than the existing use. So that was one of the determinations that we had found at the time. We had had some conversation around the fact that that really is a a limiting factor. And if there is not a positive finding made around that standard, that would be sufficient to deny the application. However, at the time last year, our decision was to move ahead and do a thorough review of all the site review criteria and the information that had been provided, which is what we did. At this point, however, what I would propose for discussion tonight is taking a somewhat different approach to this second application and to look first at this particular standard and the information that can be compiled around it. One of the reasons I'm suggesting that is that the applicant has challenged both the measurements that were made to different resources to which there were setback requirements, the wetland, the stream, the resource protection district, and has also challenged the town zoning map with regard to the location of those various resources. So my thought and I think that Jack is in agreement is that it would be to everyone's benefit, planning board, and I think the applicant's benefit as well, if we confirmed, compiled all of that relevant information about the setbacks and then determine what our next step might be. And, you know, I will put out there that, you know, one possibility might be if there's question about, you know, the wetland delineation, if there's question about the measurements that were taken to protected resources, it might be appropriate for us to engage a third party to take a closer look at that, so that we're certain what we're dealing with in terms of these various standards. So I, again, I would like to put that out there for the board's discussion and consideration. As I mentioned, Kristin Collins is here. I don't know if there's something you would like to to add or bring to the conversation before we get into that discussion, Kristin?
Well, I think you summarized well where my mind is with this, that that's the one more difficult piece of the application that we would want to have some more facts about before we proceed.
I wanted to add one thing.
Go ahead, Jack.
The three parts of this proposal that are non-conforming are that we've determined twice before by the wetland setback, the stream setback, and the road setback. And the applicant has raised the issue of the wetland setback and the stream setback, resource protection zone setback. But I don't really see that the applicant has raised the issue of whether or not they need the road setback or not. And if they don't need the road setback, then the structure's non-conforming. It doesn't need any of those, you know, any one of those setbacks. It's non-conforming. So my question for Leah is, are you disputing that the building meets the road setback? Or doesn't meet the road setback?
Leah, you're on mute.
Yeah, so that's already been determined that we have met the road setback.
The planning board did not determine that, Leah. Who determined that?
The planning board did. That the building had met the road setback.
No, I don't believe that's-
Which building are you referring to, Leah?
The barn. No. And the house, the barn and the house.
So you're disputing, you're saying it meets the setbacks? Road setbacks, the house and the barn?
I think you said you would waive it.
No, I don't believe that's the case.
Paula? I'm sorry if I may. I'm just hearing multiple voices through Leah's feed. If there are other people participating in the meeting, I'd appreciate knowing who they are.
Leah, do we have another participant on your end?
Yes, Bob is here with me, but he's not well. He can't speak very well, so he's talking to me. We're conversing and then I'm speaking.
Anyway, I guess there is a dispute about the road setback. So we need to determine the road, the stream, the wetlands, resource protection setbacks.
Yeah. So I'd look to other board members.
Okay, one second.
We will submit.
We will submit the diagrams. The diagrams. And all the measurements. To another agency.
This week.
This week.
The agency that they're familiar with.
An agency you're familiar with. And one that the town works with.
Ultimately, this board is responsible for making a final determination about the setbacks, the maps, the measurements. And it's fine if you want to submit material to the board. We would certainly look at that. But we need to make our own determination and confirmation concerning those measurements, maps, and so forth.
Paula, there was the pre-existing site review plan from 2014 that had some measurements on it. So if we're able to find that and if it shows that the setbacks are not met, what would be the next step?
Well, you know, I think what we had discussed generally was that it would be a good idea to do some confirmatory measurement in the field. It was either 14 or 15 when those sketches were submitted. And there are some measurements on those. It indicated, at least on a couple of the old copies that I had in my files, that those were measurements that had been taken by the CEO. But I do think it would be useful and helpful to confirm those measurements in the field. And so, you know, I'm thinking of that as being the first step and see what we have at that point.
But are you, so would the CEO go back out there to measure, take measurements again?
I think that would be helpful, but we can certainly discuss that.
We have submitted measurements from an engineer. So it sounds like what you're saying is that no matter what we submit, if the board decides not to accept it, then it's denied, even if our measurements are from a qualified engineer.
We're not suggesting that, you know, we're not there yet. We certainly are interested in looking at the information you provide. But I'm sure you can understand that we don't just accept information on face value, that we do need to confirm it and to check it, and that's what I'm suggesting that we do. There are a number of aspects to this. There are the measurements. There's also the wetland delineation that's been challenged, so.
So if I may, Paula, if we send the code enforcement officer out to measure and to verify what's in the engineer's report and find there to be some discrepancy or uncertainty, you know, my preference would be that the board use its authority to hire an independent engineer to go out and do that mapping to be certain. Because, you know, as far as we know and as far as the record has been in this case, the lines are, you know, in a place that would make this development not permissible.
I would certainly, you know, agree with that. And, you know, as I mentioned before, depending on the outcome of this confirmatory measurement and field inspection, one possible outcome might be that it makes sense and is appropriate to hire a third party to take a look at it.
So would the CEO look at the existing, whatever Leah has submitted? I saw that one thing that was submitted. I think that's what's being referred to. That and the the older site plan and then go out to the site and take measurements to confirm?
Yes. That's what I'm thinking. Chip?
I was in contact with the previous CEO, and he has agreed to go out there and recheck the measurements. They're on that map, but we'll need the permission of Mr. Batar in order to do such. So I'd ask the board to request that.
Okay. So Leah and Bob, I'm sure you heard Chip's comment. So I would formally request that we have your permission, that the CEO has your permission to go on the property to do the confirmatory measurements.
Yes, we have full faith.
That is a yes, you give your permission for that to happen?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So other discussion, board members. You know, obviously, as we mentioned, this really was a, you know, this was a a limiting conclusion in terms of the application last year. And it really is something that needs to be confirmed, determined, before it makes sense to move ahead with all of the detailed review of the site criteria. Again, understanding certainly that there is new information. The information has been revised from the previous application to some extent. And I don't think we're in a position to make any judgment about the adequacy of that at this point. But suffice it to say that there is some different information in the application than there was previously. But it does make sense, I think, to move ahead and look at this piece first and to see where that takes us.
I wanted to ask, Leah, the thing that you referred to, the engineer's report, is that the the thing that's entitled Batar Wetlands, March 2022, is that what you're referring to? From Joseph Stevenson LP after something?
Are you asking me a question? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, you said that engineers had submitted reports to the town. And I'm asking, is that report that you're referring to, the one that's entitled Batar Wetlands, March 2022, from Joseph Stevenson, one page? It has like a line. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that one. And there's also one from the DEP.
Oh, where is that? Do you know what page?
It was a study that was made.
Jack, that was the copy of the permit by rule.
In 2017.
Okay, that's not measurements.
That's not measurements.
Okay, so the only measurements that that you're submitting for the CEO to look at are the one from Joseph Stevenson showing the 25-foot buffer wetland line.
Okay, I believe that report says that it needs the measurements required. And I think that Stevenson, he's a soil and science engineer.
I don't know what he is. I'm just trying to pin down what you're relying on.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Paula, if I may, Anne, please.
Jack, the Batar Wetlands, March 2022. When I printed it out, on the back of that, and I'm not sure if it's intended to be that way, but there's something called Reed Field Wetlands map, and then there's some notations on it. I don't know if that's supposed to be part of the evidence as well.
Yes, that is. That's a description of how the wetlands were drawn.
And the handwriting on that, Leah, is handwriting?
How they were drawn across the property. Oh, it's Bob's handwriting.
Okay.
So would we sort of continue this meeting until the CEO has a chance to review and then reconvene and then decide what to do next?
Yes. Yeah.
Before you close it up, I have two comments to add when it's appropriate.
Okay, could you hold for just a minute, Leah, and I'll give you an opportunity? I want to make sure that there isn't any other comment or discussion from planning board members. Is everyone comfortable with this approach?
I am comfortable with the approach, Paula. I was just, I had a question just for clarity. So the CEO is going to remeasure the stream setback and the wetland setback. Is he also going to remeasure the building, the road setback, or are we leaving that alone?
Yes.
All of it?
Yes, all of it.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the approach.
Okay. Bill?
I think that we should go ahead as you are heading in the right direction.
Okay. Okay, Leah, if you have comments, please go ahead.
Yeah, the first one was just that the to say that the law says that the existing use is already stated that the use of that property is approved for a single-family home, which can be changed to a church or a community center equally. So that's already a back and forth. It can go back and forth. You can go from a single home, single-family home, to a community center, to a church, back to a home. That the land is already approved for that. And my other comment is that in light of what we've discussed, don't you think it might be appropriate to remove the negative comments on the website about the Batar family, about the Batars?
I don't know. I don't know what you're referring to, Leah, I'm sorry.
On the website, on the Reed Field Town Planning Board website?
I don't, I really don't know what you were referring to. You'll have to be more specific.
Are you talking about the application materials from the last application? And submissions from the public, et cetera, that are up?
There are accusatory comments on the website.
Specifically what?
About documents that make SSMH look illegal, that make what we want to do look illegal.
Specifically what comments are problematic?
All of them.
All of the comments on the website are problematic?
That would include the application itself, which I believe is on the website.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one second, please.
I don't see any derogatory things. Looking at it.
Leah, are you talking about comments that were made by interested parties on last year's application? Or are you talking about something else?
Just a minute, I'll respond in a second. Okay, so there are comments that say that it was going to be a civic center, which is illegal, and that was never, ever proposed by us or even alluded to by us. Oh, and it says that you've never received the number of people that we intend to have, but we have stated to you several times that we have 50 members and that it would be open to members only.
Actually, Leah, you stated that it's open to members only and whoever they invite. So I specifically been involved in asking questions about the numbers of people, and it wasn't specified members yet, yes, but not numbers of people who would be invited to these events.
We have stated many times that we would cap the number if necessary, that if they were to, if members were allowed to bring a significant other or a family member or a friend, that if it was necessary to put a cap on the amount of people permitted at any given event, that we would happily and of course-
We're not going to debate this particular point at this time. From what I'm hearing, I think that the comments that you're referring to are points of discussion or comments that may have been made by interested parties, perhaps including planning board members during the review of the application last year. And those comments are part of the record. I don't believe any of them were intended to be derogatory. They're comments that are relevant to the substance of the application we had before us, and they are part of the record. And so I don't think that we will pick and choose and remove those comments from the website. They are appropriately left there in their entirety.
Even the comment about a civic center, that's just-
I'm not sure what it is you're talking about, Leah. If there's some specific comment that is of concern to you, you could put that in an email and be specific about where it is found on the website, and we can look at it. But it sounds to me like discussion points and comments that were made during the application review. They are part of the record, and we will not remove those from the website.
Okay, I also need to tell you that we changed our bylaws, and they actually say in our bylaws that all- Okay, I also need to tell you that our, we changed our bylaws, and they actually say in our bylaws that only members are allowed now.
Okay, and as I said, we're not debating that issue this evening. That may come before us at another time. But what we're talking about doing right now is starting the way we were discussing previously, and looking at the measurements, the maps and so forth, to see if we can confirm those measurements and to take a look at the measurements that you submitted to us. On when we have that information, we'll reconvene and determine the next step. But I don't want to get into specific discussion about the site review criteria tonight. Um, are there any additional questions or comments from planning board members? Kristen, did you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Paula, we'll send in additional information in an email for you regarding what I've said.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, so, um, I don't hear any objections. I think that the path that we will take is for Chip to coordinate a field trip to look at the measurements, to look at the, the boundaries, the information that can be compiled about the stream, the wetland, the road. When that is pulled together, we'll reconvene and talk about an appropriate next step. Is there anything further on this from anyone? If not, thank you, Leah and Bob, for joining us, and Chip will be in touch about a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have some minutes to review.
Paula, did you get my email, or did everybody get my email today? There was, there's a list of minutes that need to be reviewed.
Yes, um, so I had sent my edits on the March 8th meeting to Angelica, well, to all of you, and Angelica put those, incorporated those comments into minutes, which she then redistributed to all of you. The bulk of what I did, just so you know, is to there was a huge amount of detail in the draft about the whole tiny homes issue that was very, very confusing and difficult to unravel. It was a, it was a, it was a difficult issue to begin with, and I really felt that trying to spin that whole conversation out in great detail would be problematic. And so I abbreviated those discussions in the minutes and just put some general language in there about the, you know, the, the, the crux of the conversations with respect to tiny homes and how that fit into the L U R revisions. And I made, I made a few changes specifically to the discussion about Article 8, Section 6, which was the Subsurface Wastewater Disposal System Inspection piece. And then just a couple of, of more minor things earlier in the, in the draft. So I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at those or not. You didn't get them until today. If we need to postpone a vote on those, we can, we can put them off until next meeting.
Also resend the other minutes, if that helps, the other drafts.
Was.
Sure if everybody had time to look at those either.
Yeah, I did. The March 8 minutes that Paula worked on, I had earlier submitted changes. Were those included? I couldn't tell.
Yeah, they, they, they should have been. I used, the one that I modified was the version that had your changes in it already.
Okay, okay, thanks. Don't, I've read them. It's fine with me.
Um, others, did you have an opportunity to look at them, or do you want to hold them until next time?
Fine with me as well.
Yeah, I reviewed March 8. They were fine.
Okay, um, so, uh, Bill, did you have any comments on March 8?
I do not.
Okay, so, um, I'd look for a motion on March 8 minutes.
I'll move, we approved the March 8 minutes amended.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
A discussion? Called for a vote, Jack?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. And then we had March 29. Now, those were somewhat shorter. That was the minute, the set of minutes from the meeting at which our primary purpose was to review and vote on the revisions to the ordinance. So, um, I had, um, I had a general comment about those, which is that um, the format of those is the list of articles and sections that we were proposing revisions to. And, um, what I would suggest is that the minutes reflect the language from the bulleted summary list that I had done for the select board. That was the list that I used when I summarized for planning board members what those revisions were. And in looking at the minutes and that list, they were just a bit different, and I think we'd be better off if they, if they were consistent. So Chip, you have that bulleted list that I did, and Angelica, you, I, I don't know if you do, but Chip has that bulleted list. And I would suggest that you just use the language from that in the minute. Okay. And, and I would also suggest that right after where it says meeting call to order, that you insert the following proposed revisions and additions, et cetera, were reviewed by the board. And then the list.
Okay.
Um, are there comments on those minutes from the 29? If not, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move for that. We approved the minutes as amended for March 29.
A second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? A vote, Jack?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. And, um, I don't know about everyone else. I have not yet reviewed the minutes that you sent yesterday, Angelica, from April 12. And I would like to do that because we had lengthy discussion about the Moor Ash application. And we may all have some comments about that after, after reading through it, so I would suggest that we put these off until the next meeting.
That's fair. Did you guys want to, um, do the January and February minutes that Holly had done before I came in?
I wasn't aware that we still had January and February minutes to do. I thought they were all done.
Yeah, and, and I can double check, but as far as I have, can see or that I know of, those haven't been approved yet.
Um. Okay, um.
February 8th and January 11th?
Yeah, that's right.
Is that what it is? One, okay, 111 and, and the 8th of February?
And I can resend those.
Could you do that, Angelica, please?
Definitely. I'll do it tomorrow morning.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Anything else, anyone? Chip?
We have a request for Mr. Moor Ash to be put on the May 10th schedule.
Um.
I had, I had written to Chip about the, the issue that Don and I both raised about the clearing of trees there and whether it meets our ordinance standards. Which we'll have to figure out somehow.
And Chip, have you had a chance to look at that?
I thought that he had addressed that in his submission in terms of the house. It was, there was being, I don't, I, I haven't completely looked at it, but I would like to offer him the chance to answer that question.
Well, I think Jack asked you to look at it, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, and if you can't do it, we'll, we may have, if we're going to move forward with the application, we may have to hire somebody at the applicant's expense to do it. It's pretty complicated.
It is indeed.
Unless Don can figure it out.
Well, I think maybe we need to get a handle on that before we decide if we're going to put it on the agenda for the 10th or not, so let's, um, let's hold off on doing that for the moment.
What was Don gonna say?
I was just gonna say that, I mean, what I heard at the meeting was that he's, he's willing to address it, but he wanted to get more assurance that it was going to go forward. So it's kind of a, well, I, I guess the only way around that is if we say, well, that's the only thing that we're, we're waiting on, then, then we can condition it just as you said. You know, and again, that's assuming everything, that we come to agreement on everything else.
Right. So you're saying that if, if we, putting aside this issue of the clearing of all the trees, if we said, well, everything else is okay, but we still need this determination to be made, and that might change everything depending on the results, but put off looking at that for now?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, he, he clearly has not addressed the revegetation plan requirement.
Right.
But there are, there are broader, bigger issues that need to be decided as well.
Right, well, so, so I guess, Paula, the question is, if we put this on the agenda for May 10, beside those things, if we, if we were to say we, that we could move forward subject to landscaping, then, then we either table it again, or, or we condition it.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I suppose, I suppose the other way to look at this is that, you know, that issue would need to be addressed regardless of whether he built a house in the location he's proposing, or back behind the 100 foot line, correct? So, so it would be, you know, a situation where it would need to happen regardless. And it would either be part of whatever plan went forward, or would have to be conditioned. So.
We would need to know where this, where the house is located on the land, then know how many trees would be taken down, and how many trees would need to be replanted of what size.
Yeah, well, he, he gave us the points, that, of what they were taking down. That, that was in the package.
It was?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just didn't see, you know, he, it was kind of left hanging there, because it was like, okay, you've got this many points of, for tree removal, but we're, what are we doing about it? And that's where he basically said, well, that's, we're waiting to hear if this is going to go forward.
Yeah.
And I'd rather have somebody independent determine that also. If we were.
Yeah, um. So maybe we go forward and determine the larger questions. And, um, I mean, it'll look different depending on the location of the house. I mean, ultimately.
Because if.
I'm not sure it matters, but I just wanted to let you know I won't be able to attend on the 10th.
So Jack, are you, I mean, are you assuming that, you know, you know, some decision is made about, about the project? And this, you know, this evaluation would have to happen. Anyway, if any construction is going to happen on the property, the evaluation would have to happen. If we put it off until after that decision's been made, and then either condition it, or you know, we can have the conversation about who should do it, timeframe is.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we approve what he's proposed, we'd still, we'd have it done, and if we deny what he's proposed, and he says, okay, I'll build it beyond 100 feet, then
Right.
it'd be a different measurement.
It would be a different, a different thing, but it would still need to happen.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a big house on a small wooded lot, heavily wooded lot.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Well, Chip, I'd like to see, um, you know, Jan just shared that she won't be able to make a meeting on the 10th. So I would like to see what everyone else's schedule is, and what that looks like before we make any commitments for the 10th, so.
I can be there.
Okay. Jack, are you okay on the 10th?
Uh, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay. So we could check with Henry and Noel and just have a sense of who, you know, who's available and who isn't. That would be helpful. I think the more members that can be present, the better. This was a pretty significant controversial application, and I think it would be helpful to have, you know, to have everyone, frankly, but, um.
What happens if we've had the public hearing process, and so if somebody can't make the meeting, can they send in? can they send in their comments?
Be on Zoom.
What?
Be on Zoom.
But Jan can't do.
Yeah, sorry.
What, Jan?
I said, I can't, sorry.
Right. But if she had opinions about the issue, we haven't done it before. Was that not allowed?
I don't know. I I don't think that, I mean, since we're, we're doing this as a hybrid meeting, I don't think there could be a vote, you know, that way.
Oh, right. No, she couldn't vote, but she could send. These are my thoughts.
Yeah.
Thoughts from Jan.
Jack, why are you like backing me into a corner to have to write something?
Yeah, you don't have to. If you want.
Not appreciated.
Just if you wanted to, not that.
Okay, if I wanted to, thanks.
Yeah. Because it's.
I always got my back.
You know, we spent so much time on this application.
I'm telling, you're turning on the guilt spigots here. I have traveling husband work and baseball. I just can't make it work.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I mean, the other alternative is to, you know, explore a different meeting day that would accommodate all, all the board members. I mean, you know, we could, we could survey board members and see what their availability is. I mean, the only thing that's taking us in this direction is that Mr. Moor Ash wants it on the 10th. But if there's a better date that would accommodate more planning board members, I think we could look at that.
Do we have other applications? Or we might have this mill stream.
I don't know where we'll be with mill stream then, possibly. Is there anything else coming up, Chip? That you're.
Nothing is good for you.
Okay. Okay. You know, there is the, the possibility, and we've done it on occasion, held a meeting on an off week rather than, than the second or, or fourth Thursday. I mean, so theoretically, we could do it on a different night that week, or we could go to the following week, or we could put off the meeting until the 24th of May. Those are all options.
So I'm sorry to be the constant thorn in the side. That, it's that week that is tough for me, but I do the next week on, on the off week, like the 17th.
The 17th, and what's the 24th look like for you, Jan?
Yeah, that's fine.
That would be fine as well, okay. Everybody else, 17 and 24?
Either one.
That works, okay, all right. Well, why don't we check in with Henry and Noel and see what their schedules are on those two dates, and then we can choose a choose a date for next meeting that would include Moor Ash and may possibly include safe space again. Okay. Anything else? Anyone? Okay, thank you all very much.
All right.
Good night.